Do you have something you want to give us?
Yes.
Come on up, you can bring that now while he's getting this turned on.
Some things I'll quote from, but I wanted you to have the hard copies of the reports.
Will each one get one, or just?
Well, I kind of ran out of ink on my printer, so I've got one copy.
So we're on live TV, I just want to remind everyone, everything you say and do will be recorded. So at this time, David, go ahead.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak, and I want to thank you for the letter you sent to the Idaho Department of Land to stop the Cougar Island auction. You will hear my opinion, which is supported by extensive research, current national and local reports, and scientific data I just provided. I also sent a building moratorium proposal for Valley County, which was also published in the Star News. I asked the commissioners to place a public moratorium discussion on a future agenda. I ask this because many people in our community are concerned that the continued approval of projects in Valley County harms people in our community. It also impacts our natural world and wildlife neighbors. Moratoriums are a pause in building to address density, infill, and sprawl happening here simultaneously. A pause relieves the pressure of granting approvals and allows time to consider how we want this place to look 30 years from now. A building pause can be crafted, or be broad, specific, interim, or emergency. Moratoriums are legal. McCall issued a moratorium in 2006, Caldwell in 2021, and the city of Ketchum just enacted an interim emergency ordinance. I know how hard county and city staffs work. I was pleased to see the commissioners vote for a review of all land divisions recommended by the zoning department. But there is a more significant issue, the bigger picture, of how all our problems are connected. Walt Whitman wrote, "In the great chain of causes and effects, no single fact can be considered in isolation. We now face a decisive moment in time. Each approval is isolated, but creates a chain of effects for people and the natural world." We are overwhelmed with development proposals from investors and developers. Current laws, ordinances, and regulations are not adequate for the growth trends we are witnessing, nor do they address climate change trends. And while some developers use words like affordable to gain approval for their development proposals, they fail to define what affordable is. On April 7, at the request of hundreds of residents, the McCall City Council discussed a building moratorium without public comment. At the end of the meeting, the council decided there was no need to stop development. Many people were disappointed with the decision because our sewer plan is leaking waste into the North Fork of the Payette River. We have capacity issues and needed a new master sewer plan that will not be ready until 2023. Our outdated water treatment plant lacks proper filtration and water storage to serve the growth of the community. Still, subdivisions continue to be approved. We face threats from investors and developers who want to buy state endowment land surrounding Payette Lake without regard for the beauty of nature people come here to enjoy. The sale of state endowment land is based on 1890s law, ignoring science and the environmental issues we confront in 2022. We continue to approve the building of the forest expanse, ignoring fire science that tells us not to. We witnessed the catastrophic fires that have burnt whole towns to the ground. We are watching that in real time this year with the early fires in the West. We hear from a wildland fire expert, it is not a matter of if, but when forests will burn. Still, the Tamarack, Blackhawk, Brundridge Mountain, and other proposals move forward. Climate change is never integrated into any approval process. I oppose the recent Brundridge Mountain Resort 1200 home expansion. I attended the Adams County meeting and asked questions about environmental issues, the watershed, the aquifer capacity, and runoff making its way to the Little Salmon and Salmon River. The impact will not just be on Adams County, it will be on Valley County.
David, you're just about out of time, can you come to a summation, please?
I thought I had 15 minutes.
No, three minutes.
Somebody told me 15. God, I practiced this thing. I got it down to about 10.
I'll give you two more.
Okay, that's going to be tough. Okay, the clerk told me 15, anyway.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to suggest it maybe at least as a presenter. We've done this in the past, we've allowed a presenter to make a little, use a little bit of extra time. Maybe that would cut into his other comments, but how do you feel about that?
I just want you to make this quick. We have other people in the room.
I know, I'm trying to go quick. I would have written something for three minutes if that's what I thought, but I was told by being placed on the agenda for a presentation, I'd have 15. I'll try to go quickly, I'll skip a few things. So on April 29, the McCall City Council agreed to hold a public forum on a pause in building. New studies are needed on every issue we face. Should developers and investors pay for new studies before approval? The city of Haley asks developers of future plan unit developments to reserve 10% of units for households making between 36,000 and 62,000, and set aside at least 30% of all units for full-time Blaine County residents. The opposition group, Stop Roseberry Park Development, and the Valley County Building Moratorium petitions have generated thousands of signatures and counting. Many others wrote letters and made phone calls to officials. We are fortunate to have so many knowledgeable people in our community who care and are concerned. They're not saying no to growth, but rather yes to thoughtful development that considers the people that live here in our natural world. I would invite all of you to read the conversations on the Stop Roseberry Park Development Facebook page, and the serious reasons why this development should be denied. I was going to quote from Leonard Long regarding his report, but you'll probably hear that in May 5. "The anxiety and stress of many in our community should concern everyone. We know people working two or three jobs, worrying about paying the rising rents, fear losing their lease, and many who cannot afford to purchase a house. The lack of rental property and affordable housing is growing because the growth of unaffordable housing is increasing. The unprecedented growth of short-term rentals is growing, backed by an Airbnb industry that lobbies our politicians for no restrictions or limits. And short-term rentals have impacted the health, safety, and welfare of so many people in our community. The industry has become a monster who cares only for profit, not people living in neighborhoods. I am not talking about a second homeowner who owns one or two short-term rentals. I believe in property rights. I am talking about LLCs and investors owning six or more, a commercial use similar to a hotel or motel, that fragment neighborhoods and present safety and fire risks." As our population increases, we are witnessing a significant impact on nature, wildlife, corridors, and our habitat. The adverse effects on our watersheds, rivers, creeks, lakes, and drinking water. There is stress on our infrastructure, fire services, EMS, schools, and hospitals. The staffing shortages for businesses and help-wanted signs are everywhere, and attracting professionals in many fields is difficult due to lack of housing. I submitted a copy of the Affordable Housing for Social Change by Jocelyn Pulver, and I hope you will read it. There's some very interesting facts, but I'll skip to one that is really important. In 2018, the average house cost was $207,000. Today, for McCall, it's $700,000. But even if we dropped back down to $207,000, at least 58% of our renter population still could not afford to buy a house here. What can we do? I've offered a lot of solutions. And I would say, we can change laws that do not work for people in our communities. Nothing is impossible unless we refuse to fight to change laws that do not work in 2022. We would not have the 1964 Civil Rights Act, the Clean Air Act, the Clean Water Act, the Wilderness Act, Endangered Species Act, or fair housing laws if we did not fight past laws. The question, can sprawl be tamed to protect wildlife and ag lands? The question is the title of an article I sent to the county and city staff. The solutions in the article can apply here with the implementation of urban growth boundaries, which prevents ticky tacky unsightly, think Roseberry Park Development, leapfrog sprawl, which also is more expensive for taxpayers to service. I enjoy the beauty of the mountains here every day. In the spring, I love hearing the rattling hawks of sandhill cranes as they land in their habitat, hiking to a high mountain lake, fishing creeks and rivers for native fish, or just watching fish rise to an aquatic insect, knowing they are here. We are rich in over 300 different wildlife species, the centipod and orosa pines, hundreds of years old, the golden yellow of aspens in the fall, and snow that nourishes our watersheds, watersheds we must protect. The Nazpers lived here for thousands of years and did not consider themselves separate from nature or wildlife. They were good stewards of the land, and we need to ask their help, wisdom, and knowledge. We all have in common is the love of this place. We need to decide what we need to fight for, preserve, and conserve for future generations who will be grateful, be the grateful beneficiaries for the actions we take now. Thanks for listening, thanks for your time, and thanks, everybody that came here.
Thank you, David, for your input. Is there anyone else who wants to have public input today?
I'll open my mouth if...
Okay, come on up, state your name for the record. I need your name.
Joey Petrie, I live at 225 Valley Springs Road. I agree with everything David said. I'll just go right there, just for starters. But my interest is in sustainability for Valley County. I am interested in the ag lands and the conservation, all the conservation we could get on green space. What I'd like to propose and ask for is planning and zoning, for one, to all new conditional use permits that require housing, that are looking for more housing, in all planned unit developments, at least include in their development proposals to have recycling, composting, and green space for a garden. And I think that would do a lot in our affordability for people, just to be able to grow a garden, not have to drive to wherever it is, Lake Fork or wherever, and, you know, have it onsite, have recycling centers onsite for these large places, like the one I live in, has 72 units, and I don't know how much Northwest Passage has, but I think they'd be good places for an experimental project in those places.
Joey, can I ask a question on that?
Sure.
Does the trash service pick up any recycling?
They do not pick up from these places I'm speaking of. So they don't pick up anymore. They just have that one center at Lake Fork, which is a nice place, but, and I think these smaller places could be established similarly to be able to accommodate people, and I think people would use them. Also, another thing I'd like to ask for is a glass, a place to do something with glass, because...
Unfortunately, we've had this conversation.
Yes, we have.
No way to sell it.
You don't sell the glass. You crush the glass and you utilize the sand. It could be used for golf courses, and I'd like, I wish Gordon were here, because Gordon could say how that project went where they used glass in the road. Elt might know.
Actually, honestly, what happened, Joey, was the roads fell apart after about two years.
Oh, they did?
They didn't hold together and everything came apart.
I see, but there's a road expert in this town, not in this town, in McCall, that kind of knows about that type of thing. Otherwise, you know, just for, okay, a son, one of my sons has a sandblasting business. He's paying, let's see, 20 bucks for a 50-pound bag of sand. I spoke to a woman who manufactures a glass crushing system that extracts the foil and the paper off the glass, and she sells her bags for $5 a bag, and she provides it as a community service. So I think we could find uses for the sand, which will help the greater good in that it won't be extracting as much sand from the beaches throughout our country and the world, because the ocean just moves sand to where it needs it. And so people are losing their real estate from sand being moved away from the place they bought. So anyhow, so I'd like to ask for that, and possibly the West Central Mountain Economic Advisory Committee could look into the economics of it. I'm just asking about, what would the economics be? As far as composting goes, it takes about, personally, I have about five gallons of compost. I utilize about a five-gallon pallet of compost, which comes to about 10 pounds a week. So if you add that up, I believe Adams County accepts our solid waste for $160 a ton, so somebody smarter than me has got to figure out these numbers. But I'd like to help provide those numbers whatever way I could. So thank you so much for your time allowing me to speak, and for allowing David to speak as well.
Just an update on the recycling. So we are having a conversation about how to create a composting program, just like Payette does.
Yes.
So Lake Shore is working with us. We're having a conversation about, can we do that? What is the cost affordability of it?
Just something to add to this. Republic Services, when the time comes up for a new contract with Lake Shore Disposal, I would request Republic Services, see what they could provide, because there's a woman, Rachel Klein, who is very, very knowledgeable, and she has a home in Valley County, and she's not part of that waste management program.
We have to do it as a request for proposal. Anyone can respond to our RFP.
And when will that be? Can someone tell me that?
I think we've got four more years, five more years. Ryan, do you know? It's getting close.
Getting close.
It's getting close, and we're going to make some other changes, hopefully, to that contract as well. But one of the things I want to say too about the compost, when I looked into it, is we don't create enough.
Oh.
I mean, it takes dairy, it takes a lot of stuff to keep that compost going. You need a lot of material to make it work. So, you know, that's kind of where, county's kind of in a middle area there in a lot of this stuff, and it's not profitable yet to do it, but, you know, as more people come, then maybe someday.
Well, hopefully, I'm just, I hope we're thinking in that direction, to be more sustainable, and to kind of slow down growth and take that pause. Hopefully, we could have a moratorium so we could think of, so we could brainstorm and think of these things of what needs to be done before we go, we keep going full blast with everything, because I grew up in New York City, and it's not a very pleasant place, and my heart was torn out when I saw some of the last little bit of green space being pulled out by an excavator. So it was really, well, it got me out of New York, that's for sure. I'm grateful to be here. And I don't know if you all remember the expression years ago, Ed might know, and Elt might know, and you guys might know. Idaho is what America was. Remember that?
Yeah.
Now, I don't remember, I haven't heard that expression in a while. It would be nice to be able to say that again.
So real quick question, on that composting thing, what, you know, Elt mentioned we don't get enough of this stuff. Where's everything going? What about all the breweries in town and stuff?
You know, I don't know, but there is a kid that lives on Elon, ELO Road, who's got his degree in that type of thing, sustainability. I don't know, maybe Sheri knows.
We could have a whole work session on this, because there is, it's a great concept. I mean, Payette's doing it. They've been selling compost for years and years and making money out of it. It's something we're going to work with. We're having a recycling, Woody Debris conversation on the 18th. Please listen in. You know, this kind of stuff can come up from that.
Right.
So conversations are being had. I appreciate the input, but there is a thought process behind that.
And you know, I got to say, I have a lot of faith in our county commissioners and in our city government as well, to doing the right thing, because you folks are people that we bump into at the supermarkets, in town, at the post office, and we all share this great community we live in. And I just pray that, you know, that we could take a pause and think about the best direction for everything to go. So with that, I'll end, and thank you so much for allowing me this time.
Thanks, Joey, appreciate it.
You bet.
Anybody else?
Can I bring up something about?
Come on up, state your name, where you live.
You just need the city, you don't need your address.
Donnelly.
No.
At Reece, but everyone knows me as Reece. I started Stop Roseberry Park Development.
So if it's specific to this, we cannot discuss it?
We cannot discuss that.
I don't want, it's not about that. It's about notices that are sent out that are only 300 feet from a suggested or upcoming preliminary project. How do we change them? That's very disturbing. I mean, people, two houses down from me did not get a notice.
That's state code.
Okay, so how do I change?
State code says you have to notify 300 feet, people within 300 feet. Cindy can help you with that, but we've talked, and a lot of times, she's gone more, she's gone 500 feet, just because there's a lot of people in that area.
Right.
And I think everybody knows about it.
No, but I'm just saying for future, that's a legislative change.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, anybody else? Be honest, be just, and fear not.
I've spoken before, and everyone has a lot of...
We need your name, please.
Lynn Lewinsky, McCall, Idaho. A lot of very good points always come up here at the podium. And one of mine continually is that in order to review each and every property, it still has to be considered as the whole piece. You're looking at the pie and how you're cutting it, and back and forth. And it gets more complex, I think, all the time, whether it's watersheds or recycling, development houses, housing, economics. And so what I'd like to ask the commission is to remember that to err on the side of caution has never been a bad choice. And that's my request today. Thank you.
Thanks, Lynn. Hey, we got some more in the back? You've been here all morning. Do you want to talk?
Is anybody else going to represent Stop Roseberry?
Again, we're not going to...
We can't talk about Roseberry.
No, I don't, I'm not, that's, I wanted to let them get their stuff out of the way. I'm Brandon, I'm from Donnelly. I want to, first of all, thank you commissioners for the work that you guys do. I'm ignorant, I'm uneducated, I have no idea what's going on in the community around me. And that's a problem, so that's why I'm here. I would like to say that earlier, Commissioner Allen, you asked what I do for work. What I do to pay my bills is manage short-term properties. But what I'm doing to work in the community is going to be more involved with wildlife advocacy and conservation. Those are the things that are most important to me. As far as the way you guys have to do stuff, and all the stuff that happens behind the scenes, I have no idea what's going on. So if in five years from now, I want to come up here and say something about how I feel, or what I believe to be the right choice, I think I need to have some ground to stand on. That's why I'm out here today. I do have a couple of things I would like to discuss. One is with short-term rentals. It's a suggestion. I had just seen this week that in Atlanta, they did something that's kind of unique. They are, they've put some, I don't know if it's laws or ordinances, if you're going to have an Airbnb in Atlanta, you can have a maximum of two or three homes, what it may be, you have to be a full-time resident of that city in order to own an Airbnb in that city. I know David had spoke a little bit about limiting it to six, or, you know, what can we do, right? That's just a suggestion. Limit it to residents, limit it the number. I know that the hotel industry would like it, because they'd have more people staying. Other than that, I'd like to thank Commissioner Malpin. I saw, as if I'm pronouncing it correctly, I saw that you were strictly, or the commission was opposed to House Bill 643. That is one of the main reasons why I am here, listening in. Somebody has to speak up for wildlife. So thank you for everything you all do.
Thank you, Brandon. Can you tell me your last name for the record?
Colglazier.
Can you spell that for Doug?
Charlie, Oscar, Lima, Golf, Lima, Alpha, Zebra, Indigo, Echo, Roger.
Done this a few times.
On the phone every day.
Thank you so much for your attitude. I love that you show up.
Charlie, Oscar, Lima, Alpha.
How about just spelling it, Brandon? Thank you, Brandon.
Anybody else? We appreciate you guys coming in. Very seldom do the people come to Commissioner meetings. Most people aren't involved in local government, and unfortunately, most people don't vote. And it's really sad. It's kind of a sign of how poor our society's becoming, lazy, I guess. But I agree with you guys, there's conflicting things here. I'm interested, because you're working for a short-term company, but you want conservation of wildlife, and that, to me, is like opposite ends of the scale, which is okay. But I believe the same thing you guys do. I think short-term rentals have wrecked our country, wrecked our county, wrecked our employee housing, and we've tried to get changes through the legislature, but they are adamant about protecting those. They like them, and we don't. So I guess my comment to you guys is when you see your legislators, get involved, get in their face a little bit, talk to them about it, say this is not working out for Valley County, and it's caused a lot of heartache and a lot of issues. And the other side of that is, I've been here, I was born and raised here, and I've heard this comment over and over again, that, you know, basically what it comes down to is, I've got mine, now we need to shut the gate. And that doesn't work. There's a lot of things that I would like to have stopped 20, 30 years ago, but there's a thing called private property rights, that people have the right to sell their property however they see fit. And that's a tough egg to crack, because I don't want to be the person that says, no, you can't do that anymore. We're not, we're not going to put a moratorium on building permits because a small group of people feel like we should. It takes an emergency, it takes a lot of steps to get to that point before you can do a moratorium, and we're not there yet. And I've seen a lot of change in the valley in 64 years, and some of it's been really awesome, and some of it's been not so good. But it is what it is. And to try and stop it, the only way I could suggest you could do that is to buy the ground. That's the only way you're going to get this stopped, is go buy that lot or that farmer's ground or whatever, because we all have available rights to do what we want with our property. And I'll get off my hardware. See anybody else want to add?
Thank you. So some of the things, and I appreciate the conversation, David. You know, we've had some back and forth one-on-one, and I think you guys just went through a training with City of McCall, so you understand what we can do legally and what we can't do legally. Some of the things that you raised, so the IDL lands, we're all in agreement, you know, those are our, that is, unique to Valley County with what we have. There is a constitution that needs to be amended. I applaud anyone that's looking at that. It's a huge issue. I think it does need to be addressed. I think that there are some groups that are starting to talk about that, and changing the way that the IDL endowment lands have to be managed. I think that constitution, we should look at that. But there are some things that we are, the parameters around that require constitutional change, not just the direction from us. Firewise, the Firewise Management, it is huge to Valley County. We spend an enormous amount of money working with our Firewise program. We fund, Stephanie Nelson heads it for us. It's now available for all landowners to come in and get grants in order to clear your ground. So any of you that don't know about that, you can get a grant, have somebody come in and actually manage your property, within those forested areas. So please take advantage of that. It is something, we sit on all of the fire department boards, we sit on all of the emergency management. It's something we spend a lot of time talking about, spending energy on. So we are working. We understand the concern of fire. That's what the reason, one of the reasons that I got involved with public service is because we have two access points out of here, and I watched the movie Paradise. It scares me to death. However, through my involvement with the fire departments, we have a different scenario. There are areas here for us to get to. Our humidity levels are different. So I've spent a lot of time looking at what fire conversations we can have. We are going to look at our subdivision ordinances in the wooie, the wildland urban interface areas. We can maybe strengthen some of that, some of our requirements. That's something that we can do right now and are doing. You talked about Blaine County's household request of 10% for affordable housing. You can say anything you want, it's the court system that's going to make that decision. They just haven't been sued yet on it. There is Idaho law, Supreme Court, you know, has ruled in that direction. That's a takings, so we'll see how far they get with that. Same thing with Colorado. I had all kinds of columns sent to me, you know, information on what Colorado was doing. That's not Idaho law. They also didn't send the one where they got sued for exactly what we were being requested to do. So it's a full conversation there. It's not just a snippet of what's happening. There's lawsuits filed all over this country every day regarding housing. And that is near and dear to my heart, so it's something I spend a lot of time and energy working on. We talked about unaffordable housing. A moratorium, and I've lived through moratoriums, I'm in the home building industry, I've looked at it, has nothing to do with me, will be fine. Moratoriums actually drive up the cost of housing. You hit the supply line, and the cost of everything skyrockets. So if we ever want affordable housing, a moratorium is not the answer. We can work... We can work through issues collaboratively. We are doing that, I'm gonna mention some other things we're working on. But if we stop a building today, the cost of it just escalates. You've just blocked the supply chain. And we see what's happening in the supply chain today, with any kind of, um, restrictions on it. Short-term ri, rentals, I agree with that a hundred percent. Uh, it's a legislative issue. We have been working, not only through us, but Idaho Association of Counties is having these conversations. We're trying to figure out how to, um, put enough pressure on that there is, I don't, I don't disagree with the business practice of short-term rentals, but give us other tools. So it's kinda like a three-legged stool, that took one of them. Give us some other things that we can do. It could be taxed as a business. Right now, they're all residential. There should be a business tax on that. There should be a lot tax on those. Counties are restricted, we cannot do lot tax. So, that's a legislative issue again, please help us get that message through to our legislators. We talked about waterways. We've invested, the county has invested so far, a hundred thousand dollars in a waterways management plan, we're right in the middle of that. We understand your concerns, they're concerns of ours. We're using science-based data in order to impact that study. So we are working currently on water waste management for Valley County. It's our largest asset, we have to protect it into the future. The urban growth boundaries that was discussed. All of you know about LUPA, I'm sure, Land Use Management Planning Act. There are things that we can and cannot do. If we were to tell somebody, you can't develop your property, that's a takings. And we'd best be, as taxpayers, ready to buy that ground, because that's what we would be doing. You cannot enact takings laws. So, that's, we try and keep ourselves out of that. You know, LUPA did set certain parameters around what we can and cannot do as, uh, planning tools. So we use that law, we try and do everything we can to make development as best as it can be for this area. Open space is great, send the worst, all the time on CUPs and, and, uh, land use planning tools, which do work with developers, and trying to create the best project that we can possibly have without having to buy their ground. Because that's, that's what you gotta do. You tell somebody no, you have to give them reasons why they can't develop, or show them how they can develop. How can they get to a yes? You can't just say no, or we will be buying their ground. Sustainability of Valley County. Um, I love Joey, I see him at the grocery store. I kinda hide anymore, cause.
You don't have to hide from him here.
When we sit up here too long, we make everybody mad, which means we're doing our job, but it's not very much fun at the grocery store some days. So, um, and, you know, the short-term rentals in Atlanta, again, we have to follow Idaho law. You know, it, a lot of this stuff does start with legislative mandate. The Board of County Commissioners is here to protect your rights, but also, our largest job is to implement what is mandated at the legislature. And so, unfortunately, a lot of times, we have to implement things we don't even believe in, but that is our place in the government. So, we are constantly in communication with your legislators, you should be also, but we are working and listening to your concerns and taking them up. I'm not in favor of a moratorium, because I think that we are working collaboratively, we can walk and chew gum at the same time. I understand your concerns, hopefully you can understand through the things that I just read. We're addressing these every day, we're spending hours trying to figure out the best paths forward. But in order to do a moratorium, you have to have a precise thing that you're working on. We did just do a moratorium on our land splits. We understand the process, that needed to be stopped immediately, because we didn't want everyone that was thinking, oh, I'm gonna do this, to come in and do a hundred of them during the time that we had in order to make change. So we understand the process, there is a lot of legal, uh, requirements around a moratorium. You have to be able to resolve something specific in order to put a moratorium on. We don't have that in front of us right now. If we identify something specifically that we could change in a hundred and eighty-two days, that's a different conversation. But right now, we're doing things, our water waste plan's a two-year plan. You know, hopefully we have something by this fall. But, again, you know, a hundred and eighty-two days doesn't give us much time. And there aren't things that right now, we're not already addressing that I feel like would drive that conversation. That's my feedback.
Kay, Ed, you're up.
Well, you can, you'll, you'll quickly understand, you know, um, these guys are hard act to follow. Are you thoroughly bamboozled now with all this information? I'm sure you, you know, and you convinced that, uh, your trip down here today was a waste of time? Okay. I'm gonna tell you that I think what you did today is the most valuable thing we can do moving forward. So, you have to keep our feet to the fire. You know, if we sit here just the three of us, we're just, we're gonna, we just gotta deal with the law. And, but, and the deal is, I don't want, the most important thing is you guys come in, people like you, telling us, we're concerned. What can we do? You know, and we may not, we probably don't have any answers, except all these things we can't do. So, I guess our challenge is to come up with the things we can do, if they're out there, you know? So, far as a moratorium, maybe that's not it, I don't know. But, there's a lot of things, so Cindy has a, her handle on one of them, it's really, really important to us, and that's planning. I mean, so we have to use that tool in Idaho. Can't, we do have to, and it means it's important that every time you, one of those things come up, that you're doing just like what you're doing. You're there. Keeping people's feet to the fire on these things, and making sure that all the, you know, the i's get dotted and t's get crossed. But we can't hide, and we can't necessarily hide behind the law. That's, that's a problem. And I think that's, laws change every day, but they only change if you get enough people looking at your, you know, your legislators and the eyes, and say, look, this is not working, you gotta think about something here. I don't, I think that's age-old, you know? And, uh, so there, there's a, there's, that's another, that's the kind of, where the, we're called a Dillon State, you guys understand what a Dillon State is? There's all kinds of different, you know, there's two different types of states. One of them is, is where the, the power comes from the top down. It's a Dillon State, you know? In other words, if we, we allow it locally, if we do anything, the power comes from down there at Boise, right? To allow us to do things here. And the other one is where, you know, uh, cities and counties are autonomous, where, you know, you can rule yourself, basically, set your own law. But that is, we have to, we do have to deal with that one through the legislature, but, um, anyway, see, we can't, I, in my opinion, you can't hide behind the law, you have to challenge it, and you have to work with that part of it. But, if people don't come in and talk to us about these things, we don't hear enough about it officially, except around the coffee coolers and stuff like that, then it makes it hard, and, and people like us do need to have our feet held to the fire. And I mean, I, we can't do anything if we don't, or we won't. I mean, at least that's generally the case, I think. I was on the planning zoning for several years. We never had productive meetings if we didn't have people out there in the audience arguing for their side of the case, you know? I mean, you know, if somebody, we had, we had, uh, something would show up in front of us, we had nobody out there, had one, you know, no, nobody objected, everybody found, well, oh, okay. You know, what are you gonna do? You know, as long as we checked all the boxes, you know? So, land use planning is a really important part of this, and I think we have to, we talked earlier today in other aspects about the importance of that, and I think that goes, just goes to heart of things. In Idaho, we do have, we're lucky to have that, you know, the Luda, so. Anyway. Eventually, we have to vote on stuff, so. You gotta, you gotta keep, you gotta keep us honest. And, uh, we'll all, I, I hope, I li, I would like to think that I'm gonna try to do the right thing. I'm not sure what it is yet, but. This is where it starts. And I've seen that on a number of other issues, where some, all of a sudden, somebody starts talking about something, next thing, it becomes important. We have to talk about it.
Guys, I, I need to get to an appointment at McCall, so I'm gonna have to shut this meeting off. Honestly, I mean, I'm not trying to shut you off, but I gotta be there before four-thirty.
I just asked one question, may we have a public forum, a discussion? That was my original question. And then I just gave the reasons why. I think you'll, we can come up with specific things that you need. I think we can challenge certain laws, and I think certain laws, um, will, the, the state law will support some of the things we could do. But I think it's, we have so many incredible people in our community that, you know, there is the wisdom of a crowd sometimes, that, that can figure out some of these things. So, I, that, my original question was, couldn't we please have a public discussion on a building pause or a moratorium? I think you'll, you'll be presented with a lot of specifics, um, and I didn't have time to do that, I, I did give you some, my, my original report.
Well, I think it's certainly a possibility, but what I'd like you to do is talk to Cindy and her, her, so attorney Brian Oki, because there's certain parameters that have to happen, emergency situations, that have to happen before we can just declare a moratorium.
And also like to be done with the waterways plan, and I would like to be done with our planning and zoning's update. We've got so much on our plate right now.
I know, I know.
Thank, um, Mr. Chairman, uh, actually, David's asking us basically is to take this further? In more formal discussions, where you invite other parts of the public?
Or a public conversation.
And, uh, was.
When the city of, the city council in McCall, they, they had a workshop, but it was not, was not open to public discussion. So, I asked again at the last council meeting, and now they, they are going to have a public discussion. Um, we're not, you know, there's no declaration of a moratorium, it's, it's gonna be a workshop, a public discussion, just like they're having a public discussion on short-term rentals there. They had two work, private workshops, now they're gonna have a public discussion. So that's all I'm asking is, would we please be able to have a public discussion? I think there'd be a lot of ideas presented.
It's a non-action event that is informational and hopefully solution-based, not complaint-based, of having community somewhat bad frustrations, but in a positive way, and also a learning way, because people don't always understand the laws that you have become so well acquainted with.
That's a, that's a great point, Lynn, that's very true.
It's just, it's like, your kid's learning how to drive, and you tell him to go slow in the fog, and they wreck the car anyway. Well, anyways, that kinda thing. It's a family table type of discussion.
So my question is this, so right now, we have tasked our planning and zoning commission with relooking at all of our current zoning ordinances. Is CUPs the best way to go? They have their plate very full right now, they're meeting two to three times a month. So, this conversation to me would be one that would start at the planning and zoning. They do all of our hearings, um, as far as land use planning. So, I am questioning, you know, if this is really the place to do that, or they, they bring to us the recommendations. They bring to us what, what the, um, what they have gotten through public testimony and public hearing. So, as part of their process, I mean, they are going to be having public hearings, um, on our planning and zoning requests that the commissioners have already given to them.
Those are specific, if I think, you know, if I'm correct on this, to our ordinances and then to our process, you know, as opposed to a community-based, um, discussion. And I was gonna ask, can you bring, can you bring us a format for that?
Yes, absolutely.
Something to at least consider as a format.
Absolutely, I can provide.
Something that's well thought out, you know, that.
I can provide the, actually, I've done a lot of research on this.
Then, and that would be, and then we could make a decision, I guess, of whether or not we're willing to entertain that, uh, further, kind of, I don't know, community-based.
Can you guys make it quick?
I'll make it real quick, I'll make it real quick. So what I think the public is hungry for is the ability to have a discussion at a time where people like, I'll, I'll defer to, uh, my son, Ed's son, Sheri's son, all of our kids that are working during the day, and they can't make meetings such as this. And they wanna have, they wanna have a voice and hear things, and actually be able to respond to things and hear responses to things, aside from being within these confines of this, this type of venue. So that's, that's.
I think that's a great point. We have a lot of comments from the public all the time that, I had to work. I can't go to your meetings, cause I'm at work all the time, so maybe it's something we could consider. Perhaps the way we could approach this, David, if you could get us kind of a list of a forum, some of the questions you're asking, some of those kinda things, we'll look at it, come back, and we keep bugging us about it, and maybe we can set a date down the road in a public forum, maybe, I don't know, at the Legion or Donnelly.
No, we need a large venue, actually.
Yeah, Donnelly School or.
That would be good.
And we can sit down and, and talk about this. We kinda went through this when Midas Gold was starting here about five, six years ago now. And the public wanted to know what the heck's going on, and so we set those up, Midas was there, their representatives were there, and everybody got educated. And I think that's important, so I would be willing to do that, but I would like to see kinda what you guys are looking for. That worked, and then get back to us, and.
That's great, thank you.
We'll advertise it, we'll, we'll try and find a venue for it, and, we can do.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ellen.
Okay? All right.
Thank you, everyone.
I'm gonna adjourn this meeting, thanks everybody for coming.
Your boss is doing a fundraiser at Broken Heart Bridge.